All right. So as we do not have an acting chair, um. Uh staffer just going to note the call to order at five forty-three. Called the meeting, uh, we had Walden Furcano Kiefern. Dorfer, oh Diane's gone.
No.
Uh. Thank all the staff. First order of business is we need to elect a co-chair, but we now no longer have a quorum, so.
I think she'll be back.
I have. I. I imagine so, I hope so. And then we'll.
You know she's gone.
I, I mean, I, I can see that she's gone because the meeting participants are down to just the four of us.
Exactly, yeah.
Unfortunately, so. Well.
She told me that she had, uh, read. The information from Mr. Hague, oh here we go again.
Perfect. Welcome back. Now we have a quorum.
Hi Diane.
All right. We will need as Stacy is gone. Today. We do need someone to act as chair, so.
I'll nominate Terry, I would do it, but I, I'm, I've got to leave at thirty, so I don't want to be leaving in the midst of it.
All right. Well, then I would. I would suggest that we, uh, identify what the objective of the meeting is.
So the objective of this meeting is to consider the agricultural land leases and to produce a suggestion. To go to the town council of who the eight parcels of land should be leased to.
And we have what already discussed? And what is laying open?
What lays open now is to make a motion for the formal, um, uh, recommendation to the council. Um, and, uh, in the aftermath of the lease interviews. To make any final recommendations on fields that were undecided, um, since the previous. Meeting, one of our applicants withdrew. Um, and I think we had a, um, several successful interviews and one interview that was less than successful. Um, and so we want to discuss that, um, see if anyone has any comments and then make a motion for a final recommendation.
Could you re, um, tell us which one did withdraw?
Yes, Mr., Mr. Tim Sterns withdrew.
Him Sterns, okay, and the open, um. The open discussion was with an individual that we had not had before as a farmer?
That's correct.
And is, is my understanding that that discussion is still open?
Uh, the gentleman produced a series of answers to the questions that we had on our interview sheet. Which I uploaded to the packet earlier today. Um, Mr. Kiefern, uh, mentioned that he had read these, um, I believe Ms. Dorfer did as well. Um, they can speak in their capacity as members of the committee, um, to their opinion on it. Uh, as staff, I should be impartial and not weigh in. Um.
Would any of the members like to comment on what they, where they are in that?
Diane?
You're muted, Chris.
Here we go, um, yeah, so, um, it. It wasn't evident from either the interview or the, um, the comments, uh, from Mr. Hague, not knowing how to say his name exactly, um. That he, I, I couldn't ascertain how much experience he's had in farming, um, any connection he's got to Mansfield or this part of Connecticut. Um, and so I, it felt less and less compelling and then his answers. Uh, his responses, which I felt would give him a very fair chance to talk to somebody who he could help translate. Um, if, if that was necessary, which I think it might have been, it might have been, um. It still wasn't, um. It wasn't compelling what he had to say, um, so I was not convinced that he, he would be a good applicant. I, for a time I thought he would be good on one of the properties and then, um. And then when I read his comments or his responses, I wasn't as convinced. Diane, are you there?
Uh, I think now I'm here, um. Yeah, I did not know, I didn't read that extra stuff that's in the packet, I just read the original. Answers that he put on the. Like application, I'm looking at it now and it seems like it's the same answers.
Mostly.
So anyway, um.
Hey Melanie.
Yeah, he doesn't, I mean, he's located in New.
All right, um, Ray, would you have any comments to add?
I wasn't there for the interview, so I can't, I read the materials, but. I don't have an opinion yet.
Uh. Then Michael, do you think we have sufficient information to support a vote other way, one way or another?
Um, so Melanie is here, uh, Mr. Chair Melanie just arrived, so if you want to.
Oh, sorry, I'm late guys, I.
Eh.
Guys.
Life happens, don't worry about it.
Um, so which, which property or which, uh, application are we discussing? Is it all of them right now or is there one in particular?
We haven't homed in on one, I'd like to suggest we home in on. A couple, you know, one, you know, one or more that we can do.
Yep, so what I'll do is I'm just gonna share my screen. Um, you'll just bear with me for a moment. So. This was the sheet we had here, I'll just zoom in over here, showing. The individual properties as well as the applicants, um, what they were intending to grow on these, we learned a little bit more. Uh, Mr. Sterns is doing corn and hay, um, as are Mr. Wells and Mr. Varga, Mr. Bergeron's doing vegetables. Um, I didn't even get to mark his crop, it's just corn hay, um. But, uh, we can just go down the list from bone mill, common fields and so on, if that works for everyone.
It sounds good.
Yeah.
Great. So two applicants for bone mill, we had Mr. Sterns and Mr. Hawk.
So after the interview, I would say, uh, Mr. Sterns would be my first choice there.
Yeah, did you ever communicate with Mr. Hawk again after the interview or?
I, I did, I, um, I realized I hadn't uploaded the comments, um, until earlier today, I dropped those in earlier today, the. He, he answered questions, uh, we provided that interview question sheet that we provided, that we used to guide the interview. To Mr. Hawk to see if he could handle those and, um. He, his answers were largely the same as the answers he gave on his application, which were not particularly, um.
Enlightening.
Uh, yes.
Or relevant.
Yes.
Given that information, are we ready to vote on those two? And how, how should we vote, just, uh?
Well, so someone, we'll do it with proper parliamentary procedures, so we'll have someone make a motion and second of who, which recommendation.
Chris, did you move?
Yeah, I'll move that we, um, at least that. If that's, if that's the term, lease that bone mill property to Mr. Sterns, Craig Sterns, is it Craig or Kyle, sorry?
Uh, it's Craig.
Craig, okay.
Is there a second to that motion?
Awesome.
All right. Michael, you can vote. Call for a vote.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, all those in favor of leasing bone mail field to Mr. C. Sterns, please raise your hand or say aye.
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 All against? Any abstentions? Five oh. The motion passes.
Um, may I suggest we do ones that. That, like the Eagleville one where we can just do it and, um, and skip over Crane Hill for the moment and common fields.
Yeah, some of the less controversial ones first.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Discussion, so I, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion that, um, that we lease Eagleville to Mr. Sterns, that we lease.
Recording.
Mount Hope to Mr. Varga. Uh, Coventry Road to Mr. Um, Sterns.
I wonder is there? Comments to that motion?
Mr. Furcano has seconded.
Hearing no comments and having a second, we can vote?
I, you know what I do want to actually say, I think Mr. Varga's a great steward in there. Um, he's, he's got a difficult situation, can be difficult with the public coming in and dogs and whatever. But, um, I think he just, he keeps the place looking pretty well and, um, I think we're lucky that he's there and interested. That's all.
Staff will call the vote, uh, all those in favor of leasing Eagleville to Mr. C. Sterns. Of leasing Mount Hope to Mr. Varga and of leasing Coventry Road to Mr. Sterns. Please signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Unmissed five oh. These four are now settled. Now the controversial ones.
Well, discussion ones.
Yes, the ones that take more than a moment.
So may I suggest we look at Torrey?
If it please the chair.
Oh, well, that one, Tim withdrew, right?
Yes, so we currently, we, we actually currently have no applicant for Coventry Road except for Mr. Hawk. Uh, Mr. Sterns.
I discussed that with Mr. Sterns, if you recall, at the meeting and.
Oh, you're right, you, you did discuss that with Mr., um, with Mr. Craig Sterns to see if he would be willing to take on that lease with Tim. Um, so I'm just going to mark this one in yellow here, um, to.
And he said yes, is, is the point, and that meeting is recorded and so forth, and I told him, you know, it's overgrown and so forth, but.
Yes, but he did mention that, um, so we will, we will mark this one just to clarify and he's getting in contact with Tim and, and check with the town attorney, I hadn't seen anything if there was. Um, anything else. Uh. Concerning Torrey Preserve, I see, did we have someone else join us? We did, Melissa. Welcome, Melissa.
Yeah, hi there, I had the time wrong for some, because the email said seven.
Yes, I'm sorry, the first email said seven and then I, we immediately issued a correction on the, uh, the first as handout as soon as I realized I messed that up, my sincere apologies.
Well, that's all right, I guess I missed the second one though.
Um. But let's see, so.
Melissa, we're, we're voting on, um, the chart that you can see in front of you and we're ready for which one, uh, Michael?
Uh, the last question was Mr. Keefner raised Torrey. Torrey Preserve.
I just suggested we discuss that one next.
All right. Chris, do you have a comment?
Well, it seems to me that one is, uh, uh, Mr. Wells has been doing that one, as you can see, um, and. It's just a little bit more of a production because you have to go, you know, across this other owner's property and so forth, and it seems that. That's been going well and I think there's something to be said for that, not that it couldn't with another, another, uh, farmer, but, um, I think it's nice to keep, maintain the relationship that the landowner, that butter. Has, uh, and the guys whose land he's got to cross, so I would vote for Mr. Uh, Wells there.
Hmm, I'll ask again. Did, so Tim withdrew, but was, um, Craig gonna do that with Tim or Tim was just totally out of the Torrey parcel?
He was, he was totally out of the Torrey parcel.
Okay, so really Tom is the only kind of viable candidate.
Mm-hmm.
Also, so it's a pretty clear answer.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, I was getting, I didn't notice the detail of the initial, good point.
Would we agree then that the Torrey well, uh, property would be managed in this next year by Mr. Wells?
Is that a motion?
The chair can make a motion or at least second one.
All right, then I would move that we, um. Uh, apply the, uh, Torrey property lease for the next year to Mr. Wells.
And Michael, can you clarify, it's a, is it a five-year lease?
These are, these are technically, these are five-year leases with an option to renew immediately after five years without having to go through the rigmarole again. So it's ten years as long as everything's kosher.
I'll correct the motion to five years then.
And I'll second it.
All in favor, uh, raise your hand or make a, all in favor of the, that motion, please raise your hand.
Aye.
And I can't see you.
Aye.
She said aye.
Okay. That was unanimous consent?
Uh, Melissa, I didn't see a hand or a vote.
I didn't, I'm still trying to catch up with everything, so can I abstain, I?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Good, good call. All right.
And I'd like to propose we look at Southworth next.
One of these parcels was gonna be, we talked about subdividing one of these parcels, what happened with that?
Uh, that's the third one, that's Crane Hill.
Yeah, it's.
Okay.
The, um, town staff consulted with the attorney about that and it was. Deemed to be unwise in terms of who has the responsibility of maintenance, who has the responsibility. Of ensuring what would essentially be two tenants of the land now coexist with each other. We have no way for, um, conflict resolution or remediation built in at the moment if there is a difficulty between the two. Um, we don't necessarily have multiple access points for people's fields to paint upon how they chose to plant, it could be, uh, complicated. Um, so in general, it was advised not to, if we wanted to in the future, we could gear. Future ones for that and basically redesign the fields, um, but at this time it was not recommended.
I agree with that, I mean, that's what I expected.
Do I hear a motion for this property?
Well, we have a.
Southworth.
Southworth property.
Mm-hmm. Which one is this? I don't remember.
That's the one on Dodd Road.
Oh, that tiny guy by the old cranberry bogs.
Yeah. Do you have any opinions on that one Diane?
I mean. Tom has been using it and it seems fine and. It's closer to him. Should we hold off? I wonder if we should kind of. Think about Southworth and Common Fields together since those two, it's both Wells and Sterns. I don't know.
Well, you could make a motion to that.
Yeah, I, what, why would you want to, why, why put them together? Like, I mean.
Hmm, they're not too far apart from each other, so it's like. Like, I'm just thinking about them driving out with their equipment and. I don't know.
I, that's an.
I, I see what you're saying Diane.
Uh, yeah, and I do too, I also, and I, and I like it being more efficient, but I also think that's. In part, it, and it's some, it's, in at least one case, it's how I justify a piece of my decision, but I also feel like that's the farmer's decision, um. From they, they know what the scene is.
From a. Uh, the standpoint of making these decisions on an individual basis and not. Uh, uh, bringing two or more together at one time, it makes some sense just to keep them real clean and. Uh, it won't take as long to have two votes, but at least, uh, it, it does. Leave the opportunity for commentary if there would be any. And, uh, uh, makes more sense to me to vote them on one at a time.
Okay.
Uh, Michael, would you call a vote for them for one or the other?
Absolutely, so, to be clear, the, the one we were discussing was Southworth, uh.
Right.
Very well, um, so. Oh, sorry, I, I don't have the motion in the second.
Oh, 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 okay, well, I think we had just a lot of discussion, who would move, which, was that you, Chris?
Uh, I will, I'll move that we lease that, the Southworth property to Mr. Wells, I liked what he had to say. Um, about the pits, they're finally gonna fill in, the test pits. And I also like that he has in mind to convert it to hay.
There's good recall.
Isn't it hay right now?
Um, my understanding, I haven't been by there in a while, but, uh, my understanding was it was corn.
Oh, okay.
I could be wrong, but I, that's what I recall.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor of, uh, selecting Mr. Wells for the South, Southworth, uh, property?
Aye.
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 Right, unanimous consent?
With, uh, tend to abstaining?
I'm abstaining because I didn't hear any of the interviews of these people, so. All I, all I got to do was read the, the PDF stuff.
No red flags though, eh?
No.
Okay, good. All right, that leaves us with two, uh, any pleasure from the group?
Um, Michael, can you, and I don't know if it's me messing around, oh, there we go, it was me messing around.
Perfect.
Your, your screen had gone small, um. Yeah, let's, uh, may I suggest we talk about Crane Hill?
Well, any discussion with the one of the three, either of the three?
Yeah, my, um. I'm the one who suggested we try to split it and I had thought that because, um, it seemed like a gigantic. Um, piece to take over for vegetables, um, for Mr. Bergeron to take it over for vegetables, but after his. His presentation and responses to our questions and so forth, I once again felt more confident that he was, um. Well capable of, of handling it and furthermore, I also thought it was great that he's, uh. Intending to, I don't know how close this is, but, uh, live in, in the house that's sort of amidst, um, or at least a butts it and, um. And that would be, you know, terrific if he can just be right there, he also had in mind to have a farm stand, um. And, um, to me, growing vegetables is, uh, frankly, as much as I like cows and. Corn and fields, um, vegetables feel, feed, feed people a lot more efficiently than feeding the cows first, so I like the, the vegetable idea. And, um. So my, my vote would be to, uh, uh, lease that to Mr. Bergeron.
That would be your motion that, that we vote for Mr. Bergeron?
Sure, I mean that we. Vote to.
Is there a second to that motion or just?
You can second Terry if you like it.
I, I like the idea, and if I don't, if I'm allowed, I would second that motion.
Staffed here, I believe Ms. Dorfer mentioning something, I wasn't.
I was just gonna ask, did he, did he commit to doing ten acres of vegetables or?
Yes.
Yeah, he did.
Over, over five years, is that? Or immediately or?
His, the, the interview, uh, staff remembers that the gentleman indicated that he was intending to do that immediately. To bring those fields under cultivation the whole way, um. With his, uh, with his planting.
I'm a little bit concerned about his plans for irrigation because he didn't quite have any, but I, I. Am excited about the prospect of using that field for vegetables versus corn, so. I would also be in favor, but there, it is a very large property, so I'm curious to see how long it might take, um, in reality to get set up there, but.
He didn't talk about irrigation?
He did, he did talk about irrigation, he said he'd be doing the, the black plastic with the line underneath.
No, that's like cultivation, irrigation is watering?
Yeah, so he, he was saying though that, that.
The water from?
From his well at that house.
Yeah, that's not gonna cover the whole field and also he did talk about using black plastic and trying to trap the water in the soil at the time of planting. Um, I haven't done that before, so maybe Diane can comment on whether or not you think that that's like gonna be a viable. Choice if he doesn't have drip under the plastic, um.
It is a thing people do.
Okay.
Like, I know a number of established, you know, well-established farms and that's what they do, you know, I mean, obviously it's better to have. Like. To be able to irrigate, but it's, it's a, it's a typical practice.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I've seen that very, be very effective myself.
Um, corn and some winter squash was like primary, like long-term crops is what he was gonna try to put in that field. Um.
Is there any further discussion, other issues or deeper?
I'm good.
Nope.
No, so we have a motion right now, we do not have a second.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor of, uh.
Leasing the Crane Hill property that.
Yeah, there we go, Crane Hill property to Mr. Bergeron. They say aye.
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 Um, Michael, I'm sorry, continue, you wanna say get any no's and that's.
Yeah, opposing. Opposing no? All right, the ayes have it.
I have, uh, four ayes, I did not catch Ms. Dorfer's response.
Aye. Can you hear me?
I can, yes, but sometimes it doesn't always come through, uh, very well.
Yes, I am four.
Perfect, so that's a five oh one. Tend to abstaining.
And, um, Michael, my, uh, Keefner's spelled K-U-E-F-N-E-R.
K-U-E, ah, I've been calling you Mr. Kufner, I'm sorry about that.
All right, people do it either which way you spell it.
All right.
Go back through.
That means we have one property left, anybody want to introduce that?
What's what?
Common Fields.
Um.
So, right now with the Common Fields, Mr. Wells is currently leasing it, uh, it is largely in corn. Mr. Wells voiced during his interview his desire to transition away from corn for, uh, hay cultivation, um.
Currently in alfalfa. I live next door.
It's currently in alfalfa.
It's currently in alfalfa, he wanted to do corn for one year as to like. And then put it back into hay after one year of corn.
Was his proposal.
The, our chart says that his proposal was for vegetables. No, 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 excuse me, that's Mr. Stern, I'm sorry, that.
This was, no, sorry, so this is, this is, that's incorrect, so this was. Hayes and then Mr. Sterns is still proposing his croplands, uh, for standard corn and.
Oh, I don't, I think that Sterns wanted hay, but I'm not a hundred percent on that.
Do, so I can.
Let's, let's clear this up then, then.
Yeah, someone will have to check on what Sterns put in, but I remember Tom said one year of corn and then, um, back into hay.
And Tom Wells would. Propose to move it to grain and then, is that correct, a recall?
It's, uh. So let's, let's.
In the Sterns proposal, I see it says hay. For that property.
I'm opening my documents that had the answers that I took down during the interview.
Let's see, that's Crane Hill.
That's, uh, Common Fields, Common Fields is the one up for debate right now.
Mm-hmm.
Common Fields, okay.
Diane, can you comment at some point about the different land?
Yeah, yeah, I was just checking. I hate it if I misremembered. No, so it says intended use of property. Right now it's in alfalfa and stuff, it's at the end of their lifespan, field needs to be reseeded, plan to have corn for one year as like a cover crop. Plan to have corn for one year as like a cover crop and then reseed in the spring. So his long-term plan is hay, but he wants to do corn, he wants to, he'll. I don't know if he'll herbicide it or till it and then do corn next year and then. He would put in, he'd probably like fall seed it.
He mentioned in, uh, Mr. Wells mentioned in the interview. That uh he'd like to do alfalfa in common fields, but the problem that he's been having with the alfalfa in common fields. Is that when people walk through the field, they bring their dogs through. Um, they ride their dirt bikes through, particularly with the dogs that can cause parasites in the alfalfa, which can cause heifers to lose calves. Um, and so that has been a problem. Um, that he's been having with the alfalfa and he does that, that makes the common fields less viable for the alfalfa. Um, but he's abandoning the milking operations, which means that he is intending to do much more hay. Over time.
Feeding heifers.
Yeah, I don't know. Um, this past year, so Tom holds the lease to the field right now. And this past year, um, he like. Probably like subleased it or whatever. I don't know what the arrangement would have been, but other farms came in and hate it. It wasn't him. Um, so, I don't know. That. It's like. I mean, I wouldn't care if he were the only one applying for it, but given that there's. Another farm in town who is interested in the field. It's like, is he applying for it just to hold on to it? Does he really need the hay? I have no idea. But in the past year, he didn't hay it, someone else did. Um, so.
That's interesting. I don't think we knew that. The farmer is supposed to be the one who actually does the work. Um, I've not had any reports of that in my office, but as far as I know, there's no subletting allowed.
I mean, just hard machinery. I mean, we don't really know.
Right, I mean, I, I guess, like, I don't, I only, I live literally next door. Um, and you know, it's like, it's not his guys, it's not his trucks, it's not his equipment. He does round bales. They were doing. Haylage, they were just, you know, like sucking it up and shooting it into trucks and hauling it off. Hmm, um, so, I don't know. I mean, right, like, there's a gazillion ways that could have happened. That's like totally makes sense.
I do know that he often has equipment issues, um.
Right, so.
His equipment's not super new because he, he also um pays right the field next to my house. And um, you know, they go back and forth. Sometimes they do round bales, sometimes the round baler isn't working, so they do square bales. And sometimes they're just like literally shooting it into a wagon. So I think it depends on what equipment is working and when and like all that.
Right, yeah, this was definitely a different farm. It was out of Lebanon. I can't remember the name of the farm, but. It wasn't Tom's equipment. Hmm, I mean, like, again, I don't care when we are the other, but it's just like, how do we decide between? The two parties, you know, like, they're both. Viable businesses in town. I don't know.
Well, then I would have a question and that is, it's, should have come up before and perhaps I missed it. If we approve one farmer and that farmer makes a decision to sub, so to sub it out to another farmer, is that okay with us? With our lease, uh ring, uh, how the lease is stated?
I certainly don't think it's the spirit of what we're trying to do, whether or not it's legal is another thing, but it's, to me, it's not the spirit of.
Yeah.
Right.
Especially if that sub farmer was out of the town.
Right, but there could be so many reasons why he did that, like, I, so like, alright, so. He still had a lot of round bales from last year sitting on the side of, like, from twenty twenty-one. Sitting on the side of the field this year, so I just assumed that. He didn't actually need the hay this year, but there could be like a gazillion other reasons he had someone else do it, you know?
I just checked the, the agriculture land use agreement. Um, subleasing isn't allowed.
Yeah.
So, if, if, if someone did sublease, now we don't have any. I, I don't know that I have any like good evidence in my, in my enforcement capacity. Um, taking off my, my. Uh, staff hat and putting on my enforcer hat. I don't actually know that I have, you know, something that would, would demonstrate that. But if anybody could produce other documents uh that backed it up, we could use it as grounds for revocation. Uh, but we're at the end of the lease.
Right.
So.
Or, you know, we could just. Maybe make it clear that if someone were in circumstances where like they just could not hay. For some reason and they needed to sub it out, that they just like need to let the ad committee know or something, you know?
Yeah, that is, that is actually the term, is they just have to come to us and let you know that this has to be done and that we can modify it. And we can allow them to do that with written permission.
Okay, so it's, maybe we just need to remind people.
Yeah, I can send out a letter to that regarding.
And it may be that in hay season. Um, Farmer A is too busy, so he gets Farmer B to put it up for him and they have some arrangement, but Farmer A uses the crop.
Yeah, I don't think Tom was using it, but maybe, um, and like seriously, it was so hard to hay this year, so maybe.
And last year, both, both last year, last year was so dry and then this year was so wet.
At least you could hay, there just was nothing to hay.
Yeah.
This year, there was plenty, but you couldn't do it. So maybe it was just like the conditions were literally never right for the round bales or something. I don't know.
But you were saying that the, there are bales on the property that were from last year, right, when?
Yeah, they just all got taken out in the last couple of weeks.
I remember someone during the interview speaking and I think it was Tom about um. Uh, hay that was rotting in the field, but I thought that was from hay this year because it was too wet. Does anyone else remember that?
Yeah, I remember he was gonna, he was gonna use it for mulch.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure which property that was on though. That might be the bales that we were talking about. Um.
There's still a couple of bales out there. Um. And those look, those look like they're rotting, like, you know, when they're good, they're nice and like. Round, right, but the ones that are out there are slumping and so. But it's only like three or four or something.
Michael, how critical is it? I mean, here's what I'm thinking, that we actually set this aside, this particular one aside. Um, in part, cuz Diane, you mentioned and it's hard to do without a, a map. But that what we assume is all one piece of land is actually several parcels.
Oh, yeah, that's the other part. Thanks, Chris.
But, um, and, and apparently, Tom Wells has, you know, it's a, uh, whatever, has permission or is doing. Is farming the other part, the adjacent part.
Right.
So, you know, anyhow, I, is it, Michael, back to my question, is it reasonable for us to pause on this one?
Technically, yes, we, if, if the committee is looking for further information about. Mr. Wells' current practices on common fields and doesn't feel right making a decision tonight. I can take the other six and a half, we'll call as long as I can sort out Coventry. Um, recommendations to the town council in January and get those leases approved and then we will figure out common fields um. In our, I'll schedule a meeting. We have one scheduled in January on the eighteenth of January. Um, hopefully I'll have good full information with you all by then. Diane, I may follow up with you if you'd like. Um, to provide a little more information. I just, I kinda need to orient myself with some of these things going on there so I can give everybody a full accounting. Um, and.
And I think a map would be helpful in there too.
Sure, I can, I can do that. We can just make common fields a discussion in January.
Come up with a clear set of questions for.
And, and uh, Michael, with respect to your, to your half thing and Coventry, um, check out the, the video.
Yes.
Recording, cuz in there, I specifically mentioned it and he did say he was interested.
I do, I do recall that. The thing I have to, to get figured out is whether or not that, that. Agreement to do so, um, will allow Mr. Sterns, uh Craig. To kind of take the place and partner with Mr. Sterns' Tim. Because Mr. Tim Sterns is the one who applied for it, but then he withdrew and Mr. Craig Sterns did not apply for it. So I just have to work that out with the attorney since we're supposed to go through RFPs for these. Uh, I just have to, I'd have to make sure that we're on good legal footing to make that recommendation.
Or is it simply to get Mr. Kyle Sterns to uh?
No, Craig.
Craig, Craig to uh, to just fill out a.
It, it might be that simple, yes. It may not be hard. I just need, um, I, I just have to make sure I go through that with legal.
Okay.
So if, if the committee will, would like, we will table common fields. Uh, uh, to January eight, uh, eleventh, January eleventh is our. Next meeting. Um, and I will take these recommendations to the council.
So, do we feel like we have specific questions for Tom Wells about the field that would help? Make a decision? That we would, we would ask Michael to do on our behalf? Is that the idea here?
Yeah, I think so.
Alright, so.
Specific questions?
Well, one of them, one was a quest, is a request of Michael, again, that, did he get a map that shows all the different properties that are being? Um, farmed there, so that we have a clearer idea cuz, uh, as you pointed out, Diane, the. Different parcels that all look like they're the same one are actually, I think, three different owners.
Right, so on that side of the road, on the north side of Bassett's Bridge Road, it's owned by. The biggest part of it is owned by the town as common fields. And then the right away underneath the power lines is owned by EverSource. So, it seems like it's this one big chunk, but really, there's like. Two property owners.
Oh, it's just two, okay, I thought it was three.
And two leases, yeah, the other side or the south side of the road is three owners. So.
Okay.
Yeah, Ed Hall owns one of those. I can actually pull this up.
It's Ed and EverSource and then part of it is Mount Hope. Oh, it's actually four. And then, part of it is um. A property owner on one ninety-five.
So I'm just going to share my screen here.
But that's not even relevant cuz that's the other side of the road.
Right.
So, if. Everyone can see my screen here. Um, so EverSource's power lines come through here. The common fields includes.
There we go.
So the common, common fields includes this parcel here, not these parcels with the houses, this parcel here. These four parcels, but not this one, twenty-nine, one thirteen, twenty-one over here, which is also farmed. This one is not part of the common fields. Uh, seventeen, one, two, three, seventeen B, seventeen and seventeen O S. I hate assessor's parcel numbers. Um, are, these are the town and these are the leased fields. They're non-contiguous, as you can see. Seventeen is least as part of this, but is separate from these five. Um, and I believe Mister, there's uh, that is separate from the actual power line and the EverSource property. Even though they're kind of cultivated together, I believe.
So another, that's very helpful, thank you. Um, another question or comment to Mr. Wells would be. You know, does he understand that we are really not interested in subletting? Um, and if he's done that, you know, he needs to talk to us about it. About doing it again, if he's, has in mind to do it again.
I can't speak to him about that.
Kinda clarify this whole alfalfa to corn to whatever thing.
Well, I mean, that's, I could, go ahead, Melanie.
Maybe you can.
Well, did he say, in the interview, did he say something other than what's in his written response?
It, it was, uh, in, in staff's recollection, uh, staff does not remember. In the interview, the mention of the corn to hay. Remembers corn to hay, but not alfalfa to corn to hay for common fields.
It's currently in alfalfa.
Right.
So it's not like he would do anything. Like. Yeah, go on, I'm sorry.
No, that's the, that's the only pro, comment I had.
Yeah.
That sounds right to me. I do remember him talking about transitioning the fields. I don't remember the exact order. There were some other things going on at the same time, but, but I, does sound like that, that sounds familiar, that he wanted to go to corn and then back to hay.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't have notes for that part. So.
And that may also be what he said about the Dodd Roadfield that I thought was in corn and going to hay.
Oh, okay, yeah, cuz I'm pretty sure it's not in corn.
Here's his uh, his comment in the, in the application. Uh, is there a crop called Festolium?
Yep.
Okay, Festolium, orchid grass and alfalfa are at the end of their lifespan. Field needs to be reseeded, plan to have corn for one year. Cover crop then and reseed in the spring.
That makes sense.
Yep.
Well, I see you muted.
All right, additional comment there, maintain fertility levels. Alfalfa is dying out. Festolium was added three years ago to fill in uh the bare spots. Festolium is only a three-year crop. I plan to plant corn for one year, then reseed to alfalfa, hay, alfalfa, hay mix. And then cut the remaining overhanging trees and other invasive species. Maintain and improve soil health, increase organic matter, uh, so the water retention is improved on the gravelly fields.
Is he, does anyone know the reason that he's doing the corn? Is that just so that they can actually spray and kill the alfalfa and whatever the other one is? Cuz the corn can withstand being sprayed or?
I don't know.
That would be another question, Michael.
So, this is, this is maybe a bigger picture thing and. Alright, so I need to talk about rats. Like, there are totally rats around and. Like, not, like, they're around. And if the fields go into corn, there will be more rats and. Like, is that something? Like, when does that become like something the town cares about, you know, like? I mean, rats are on farms, but like, there's rats all over here. It sounds so bad. But, I mean, I've seen, like, we have neighbors with chickens, they have rats. I've seen rats running across one ninety-five at night. Like, I've seen roadkill rats down the road from us, like, there's rats around. And. Once there's corn, there's definitely gonna be more rats, so. Like, that's kind of a tricky thing when, like, there's all these houses around, you know, if you're out in the middle of nowhere, it doesn't matter as much.
Hmm.
Terry, you have so much agricultural animal experience, like, does anything, does this, like, are you thinking anything?
Well, I just, I, I'm not at all an expert in this area, but I just wonder. How many years of an alternate non-rat in um inviting crop? Would it take to reduce the population and since you're in a, an emerging urban area? Where everybody has a different kind of crop going on at the same time, is that a losing? Um, game?
Right.
I, I mean, they'd say that because you have a, a great, a good CSA that is dependent on fewer rats.
Fewer rats is always better, yeah, um. Well, right, but the point is, there's not corn there right now. And once corn gets planted. Are there more rats?
Well, it's, again, there's something else for him as far as a question. Are there alternatives to this?
Um, I guess, I don't know if it's on the question list yet, but I am curious about why the hay was left in the fields for. A whole year, so if they were bailing and then leaving it there, I mean, I'd be curious about whether or not they, they do need to. A whole year, so if they were baling and then leaving it there, I mean, I'd be curious about whether or not they, they do need to use that hay because that. We're hoping that it's.
Another great question.
I can, I can speak to that and why that happens sometimes.
Um.
So often when you're baling and you're trying to get things in with the proper moisture content in the hay itself. Um, you'll have areas of the field that end up being a little bit wetter than your ideal, and yet you're within this weather window in which you have to do it. Um. And so sometimes. It is more cost-effective and time-effective to bail the, um, the hay that is still too wet. And just know that it's going to rot and you're gonna toss it. But you can't have it sit on the field and just, you know, be there ruining whatever's gonna grow again. And so what you'll do is you. Bail it and then push it to the side, and sometimes you just push it into the woods and let it rot. Um. It's a little weird to plastic wrap it and, and do that typically, like, it's not unusual to see like actual like square bales that are still have the strings on them or. Round bales that still have netting on them, um. You know, you don't, I mean, the, the process of wrapping bales is, is separate from. Um, the wrapping round bales is separate from actually like, you know, netting them. So it's a whole nother step with a whole nother machine that needs to do it. So tha- that's a little weird that like, you know, you have rotting ones that are still wrapped in plastic. But it's definitely not unusual and very much like normal practice to. Take ones that you know the moisture content is too high and just kind of shove them off to the side and deal with them later. Okay. Not to say that that's what it is. But it's common.
That's good to know, because I don't have much background in pasture management, so that's, thank you.
Well. Is there? An alternative with the other person, the, which would be Craig Stern? That. Has a better solu- solution to this. Conundrum?
Well, it may make sense to. Just ask him. Get more detail again. I don't, I don't have the applications in front of me. To hear what he had in mind.
Let me, well, let's just propose this, um. Michael, could we, as a committee, say? We understand because these farms or this property is in more. A populated area, more urban area than others. And because of the moisture, because of the. Act. The, uh, because of the stream that's nearby. I don't know, is that a factor, Diane? Um.
Uh, it's, it's over like toward the road. I don't, the soils are incredibly well-drained, like, I mean, other than the fact it might have rained.
That's, that's.
Moisture is not an issue.
Alright. I don't know, can we go back and, and pose, uh, scenario B? Or drill down, so to speak, on a scenario B? To the two of them? Or is there a timeframe or other restriction?
Well, you said, um. January eighteenth or whatever it was, nineteenth. We still have Michael or did he disappear?
No, Michael's still here, sorry. I wasn't, I wasn't certain, yes. Um, so January eleventh is our next meeting.
Eleventh, okay.
Um. And. Uh, or maybe it's, no, oh, so hold on, sorry, third Thursday, I was looking at the wrong year. It was January eleventh this year. It is January eighteenth.
Good. Cause I could come on the eleventh, alright.
Yes, uh, it wouldn't be the eleventh because that's the day when Joshua's Trust meets and we're trying not to coincide with them. Um. But, uh, yes, January eighteenth, we can finalize these recommendations to AgCom. Uh, re- recommendations of AgCom, um, after getting some more answers, I'll see what I can pick up from those two gentlemen, uh, and then return to you.
Do we need to draft a statement? So the statement is clear for both, and. I guess you could do that. You have, do you feel like you have the issues in front of you, uh, Michael?
Uh, I definitely have. There, there's, there's questions about the subletting of the fields. There's question about. Um, you know, the field's currently in alfalfa, moves to corn, eh, that ha- may have tendency to attract more nuisance wildlife. Um, what would? That do, particularly because there are a lot of houses, there's a school right by here, um. You know, uh, how will you prevent nuisance wildlife?
Oh, please don't frame it that way, because then Hill was put out poison. And then, like.
We'll kill a whole bunch of raccoons and squirrels and.
Yeah, and like maybe our dog, yeah.
Yeah.
An owl.
And cocks and, yep.
And some rats.
So, so if we, if we're not. Um. Framing it that way, then I have really only, only two questions, one of which is why was hay left in the fields, which Melissa just gave us a. Kind of comprehensive answer to, um, and then the question about the subletting of the fields. Um. And then just a question about any way to not do corn?
Yeah. Is there an alternative to, to doing corn as a transition?
Crop?
Yeah.
And, and we, you, you need that transition crop for, for soil health from alfalfa into, um, to hay, right? Because you need to prevent depletion.
Hmm, hmm, not necessarily.
Corn is, corn is really hard. Yeah, corn is not a cover crop. It's very hard on the land, actually.
So why do corn, oh, you know, that's the question. That's the question. That's exactly the point. Um.
I think it was because he had to plow the field up anyway. And he saw just doing corn, that's sort of, and it grows, boom, it's in.
My, my guess is that it's that, or because, because they have the roundup ready corn. You can plant the corn and spray. To kill the alfalfa, whatever else is there.
So it gives them the opportunity to still get something in that year.
For that one year.
Then we need to talk about herbicide drift. Cause like, we can't, like, I'm like, I mean, I'm right there.
Yeah.
Gonna herbicide. Do we have, I mean. I know that herbicide is like a typical practice, but.
But it doesn't mean you like it.
Well, and it will kill my vegetables.
Yeah.
Well, I think that needs to be, uh, one of the phrases in, in the question. But. You, would be your management to, because of the. Population density and. Um.
Well, and Jason Farms that are, that are. Not, that are not, uh, corrupted already.
Well, and the school. I mean, you can spray on a weekend and it's like pretty short, right, Melissa? Like. Um. Like, it's, it's sort of like. Like re-entry time, so to speak.
Yeah. But I mean, it kills everything but the corn that's been. Engineered to not die. Which is my, my guess, why he's doing it.
Yeah.
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 I mean, maybe not, but that, I mean, seems like why.
Yeah, it used to be in corn a really long time ago and he. I'm pretty sure. He was doing roundup ready. I mean. I don't know a lot about growing silage corn, but you know, he'd have like the big, big sprayer trucks come in. When it was like. Kind of like knee-highish or whatever, so.
I've gotta go. But, um, thank you for making this happen and everybody getting here.
Bye, Chris.
Alright, I think we're getting close, close to the end, Chris, so we'll see some notes here coming out of the Stent Michael's office.
Okay, so.
Alright, Michael, do you feel like you have, um?
I can, I can attempt to raise those questions with, with both of the remaining valid applicants and just see.
You may want to reach out to Melissa or Diane if you have some nuances there that.
Yes, absolutely. I will do that. No, your, both of your expertise today has been really, really valuable concerning, um, crop cultivation. Um. So I will do that and come back with answers after Christmas. Great.
Thank you.
Okay, absolutely. So we have those seven, um, that, if we're gonna push that one off, um, that is the only other item I have on the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Alright, then. Are there any other words, words of wisdom from any of the members? If not, I see some shaking of heads.
Motion to adjourn.
Alright, there's a motion to adjourn, uh, all in favor? Raise your hand and say something.
Bye.
Pose. Alright, Michael, we're going to adjourn.
Excellent, adjourned at six forty-three. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.